Ask Dwayne and Jim if they would add to the agenda a discussion about the part-time constable hiring and advertising. We could just add that to the agenda. We could put that, put that right up at the front so we can, Dawn's here to talk to us a little bit about that.
That's fine.
So we can get a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion that we add discussion on the new part-time, possible part-time constable.
Great.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's just go quick, quick business. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held November 26th?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so what we just asked you guys to add was the discussion about the police.
Wait a second, is there going to be a discussion on approval of minutes?
No. There was a discussion here, and that's, that's the discussion. If you have a question about the minutes, then you can bring them up to us at the, at the audience of citizens, or you can bring it to our attention at another time. But we just approved them now. If we find that you are correct and we need to make an amendment to them, then we will do that at the next meeting. But that's not.
I'd like to bring the look at whatever time it can be.
That's fine, yeah, that's great, thank you. Okay, so you all discussed a couple of weeks ago the intent to advertise and to discuss with the Board of Finance the hire of a, of a, of a part-time constable. I'm comfortable that you explained that, you know, when Dick died, we lost the constable, but the police department at the time, all of the policemen and myself and the Board of Selectmen at the time, had conversations and determined that we would be able to cover the town. And we were able to do that for three years, and we've been paying attention to it as time has gone on. In the past year, Trooper Taylor and I have been discussing the idea of bringing in a part-time constable to try and increase coverage to what it was prior to Dick died. Not just to increase the coverage, but also to bring in some younger blood into our police force in order to prepare for the future. We have begun that process. You guys had the conversation, and we talked about it, we talked about it with the Board of Finance. Just wanted to bring everybody up to speed. We've begun the process by advertising for, for the position. I anticipate we'll get some applications, we'll begin the interview process. What will happen is, through that process, we will, at the very least, compile an active list of applicants that are interested in the position. From that, we can go forward, or we can wait. But I strongly advise that we move forward now when we can, because even starting now, it'll be April before we can go through all of the proper paperwork to get someone in. And April, May, June, then we're into next year, so it gives us three additional months of coverage. And I think you discussed last year, if that's me properly, the amount, the cost of that will be already covered by the reduction in the state cost. Truper Taylor is here to answer any questions about coverage or anything like that that you might have.
Well, no, I don't think I have a question. I just, you know, and I mentioned at the prior meetings that in the past, I mean, since Dick's passing, Mike, I personally was concerned about the level of police coverage and all that kind of stuff. And there's a visual, at least, when the projects are going on in Essex and whatnot, our constables are down there directing traffic. The visual is there, and from the way I understand it, is they're doing it on their own time, after their shifts are over and all that, but there's the visual of our guys out of the town doing stuff. And, and I think that's part of the overall situation with, with Mike's speeding issues in town and all that, that I, I believe, and I have, since Smitty passed away, that there would ultimately be a need for another constable. And I think we're at that point, and I don't know if you have, if you've got any, you know, figures or anything like that, but I think it's just a, there's a perception that we need more, and I think it's a perfect time in that the state reimbursement is not, we used to have to reimburse 100% for the resident state trooper and the services, and now it's only 85%.
It was 117%.
117, now it's 85. Okay. So that leaves money, obviously, in the budget for police, which makes it a, a good time to explore that. And then it would obviously have to be a budgeted item for the next, the next, next year.
That's the important part of this, and that's, I think the starting it now starts the conversation, and we don't want to move forward now if we're not comfortable that we're going to do this in the next year's budget and future budgets. So, and that's why we're talking about it now, that's why we're starting the process now, so we can continue that process. I don't know if there's anything else you guys want to talk about. You had a bunch of questions and things like that last week, but I think they're the answers. So, I guess we'll. Not for me, and I don't know that we want to open, there's no decisions to make.
Is a constable the same as a police officer?
I think in general terms, yes, I think.
The same exact thing. Constable is an old term that was used to identify a constabulary. We are a constabulary technically that falls under the Connecticut State Department's Resident Trooper Program. So your question is, no, there's no difference. They go through the same exact training, they're required to do the same amount of hours, and also the recertification every three years is the same as if the Middletown Police Department.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then would be great. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the Selectment Meeting Schedule that you guys were mailed out earlier. Unless you see any conflicts in that schedule, we can.
Can I make a motion that we accept the 2020 Selectment Meeting Schedule as, as voted, or as printed in front of us here?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Next we have two appointments, the reason we're all here. What I'd like to suggest is that we go through, we separate our planning and zoning, which I think is the, is the bulk of the reason that the crowd is here today, and get rid of the business at hand, which is making the appointments that we didn't make a couple of weeks ago. Once we go through those, we can open up the planning and zoning conversation.
And I, and I'll fess up that the last meeting, that most of you were here, we made motion to do that, and we never voted. And that's why, that's why we're, we're doing these again right now. You know, we, we made the motions and the second, and with all the conversation and all that, we, we failed to, to have a vote, and, and.
Right.
So that's, that's why, that's why it's here, and I, I apologize, and we're, and we're here again, and we'll, we'll make it right. I just wanted to be upfront.
Easy peasy.
Yep.
So if we can separate, Sue.
If I could just point out, on the Community Health Committee and the Conservation Inland Wetlands Committee, there were questions about science backgrounds of all of those members, and I don't want to let you forget those.
No, there were a bunch of questions that, we, we got answers, Dwayne's going to read them off to everyone.
Yeah, yep. Thank you. I have a whole list of questions that were presented two weeks ago. I have some of the answers, some of the answers I don't, but I, I will make a response.
So, I think, as was discussed, but just to point out, while we are separating planning and zoning from this conversation, or, or just for this.
Right.
But Community Health Committee and Zoning Board of Appeals all need to go, just like planning and zoning, need to go to the town meeting to be ratified. So we will, it's okay with you both. What we'll do is separate these out, make these motions, make these appointments, and then we'll move on to the conversation about planning and zoning.
When will the town meet these meetings?
Jane, we're in the process of trying to schedule that. The question really, in my mind, and maybe at the end of this, we can, we can have a conversation as, as a big group about when we're going to plan it for. In general, I would like to plan it as soon as we can, but in, because of the timeframe of where we are in, in the year, and the, and the holidays and things like that, I don't want to upset the apple cart and say, we're trying to do this when no one's around, so we can have a conversation about it. At the beginning of the year is fine, or as soon as we can is fine, whichever, we can get some sort of a consensus. It's, there's not, there's not an immediate need for any of this to happen immediately, so if we think, if we think that the beginning of next year is, is a better time, because we got people that, that will be able to attend that are too busy now with the holidays, that's fine, too. Let's see, so, okay, so I think what we need to do is get a motion to make the following appointments, and then just go through, because there were a couple of additions. Carol Jones, for example, has been added to Community Health. Well, that may be the only addition, but she probably ought to read them off again.
Yeah.
So, if we can get a motion.
Okay. Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the list that's provided in front of us for the Community Health Committee. Do you want me to read the names off?
I think, yeah, that's appropriate.
Okay, Joanne P. Giuliano, term to expire 12/1/21. Carol Jones, 12/1/21. Grace Crick, 12/1/2021. Russell G. Marth, 12/1/2021. And we have a vacancy.
We're going to do them per committee, or are we going to?
Yeah, let's do it.
So I second, I second that, for the Community Health, and as they are, as they were read.
Okay, is there any discussion? None heard, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Conservation Inland Wetlands, their three-year terms. Susan M. Board, term to expire 12/1/22. Ronald D. Larson, term to expire 12/1/2022. And Carol W. Libby, term to expire 12/1/2022. I make a motion that we accept those three names of the Conservation Inland Wetlands.
We make the appointment.
Make the appointment, I'm sorry, yeah.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Constables, I'd like to make a motion. The constables, one year. Pete Lewis, term to expire 12/1/2020. And Raymond Seifert Jr., 12/1/2020.
We got the specials.
Yeah, well, we can come back to those, let's do this one. Any conversation?
I second that, yep.
Any conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next will be special constables.
Can I ask a question, or should I? It's about the special constables.
Sure, go ahead.
I just, I'm curious, what, what that is?
Mostly it's for assistance in directing traffic during parades and things like that.
Okay, but do they have, like, full police duty? Okay, so it's just, just for that kind of, like, traffic duty?
And I believe a, a fair amount of them are fire police for the fire department, also to direct during the time of a fire accident or, or other.
Yeah, I checked the ordinance, that's why I figured, I'll take you guys in for you.
We got a motion?
A motion that the constable specials, special constables. Howard Beartley, term to expire 12/1/2020. Jerry F. Clark Sr., term to expire 12/1/2020. John E. Ely, term to expire 12/1/2020. John L., Robert L. Jenkins, term to expire 12/1/2020. Jonathan Kastner, term to expire 12/1/2020. And Donald R. Sampson, term to expire 12/1/22, 2020.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to appoint for the Divine Advisory Board, a two-year term. Pamela Potter, term to expire 12/1/2021. And there's three vacancies.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Angus, could you say, tell us what that Design Advisory Board is?
Dwayne, I actually answered that for Dwayne, and if you wait, wait until the end, we can.
I have notes for that, because it was asked two weeks ago.
Okay.
I will say.
Unless you want it.
No, no, this, let's do that all together. I will say that in the Design Advisory Board, there are four positions on that, and we need to go through who's on that now, but there are four, in the ordinance that created that board, four of the members of that commission need to be recommended by other organizations like Planning and Zoning, like Economic Development, and, and other commissions that I'm not familiar with, one is Board of Selectmen. So we need to see who is on there, and then try to find some other folks that, that want to help out in that.
Okay, I make a motion that we, for the Housing Authority, it's a five-year term. Thomas E. Metcalf, term to expire 12/1/2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Parks and Rec.
For Park and Recreation Commission, three-year term. Christopher Mara, term to expire 12/1/2022. Grace Marie Patrakko.
I'm sorry.
Sorry for the mispronunciation.
Sure.
12/1/2022. Leslie Sheen, 12/1/2022. Elizabeth Taran, 12/1/2022. Justin Was, 12/1/2022. Tracy Woodcox, 12/1/2022.
Did you, did you make a motion, Dwayne?
Yes.
Okay, I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
While there are no vacancies advertised here, there are a number of vacancies on that commission, if anyone would like to participate, certainly could use the help.
On the Parks and Rec.
On Parks and Rec, yeah. Planning and zoning, we'll skip over for right now.
The Town Hall, I make a motion that the following names be, be put forth for the Town Hall Auditorium Management Committee, one-year term. Carol V. Dowak Jones, term to expire 12/1/2020. Sarah J. Fika, term to expire 12/1/2020. Luther M. Moen, 12/1/2020. Lynnalyn Smizer, term to expire 12/1/2020, and there is a vacancy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For the Veterans Green Monument Committee, two-year term. Richard Forstall, term to expire 12/1/2021. Jonathan Kastner, 12/1/2021. And there's a vacancy there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, water pollution?
Okay, make a motion, the following names be, be set forth for the Water Pollution Control Authority, three-year terms. Theodore M. McKenzie, term to expire 12/1/2020. Mark P. Rayer, term to expire 12/1/2022. Leonard Rodriguez, 12/1/2022. And there's a vacancy.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And for the Zoning Board of Appeals, three-year term. Donald Rose, term to expire 12/1/2022. And there's a vacancy as an alternate.
Second to the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, business at hand, let's go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, have a conversation, continue the conversation, and, and then I, and then we'll see where we go from there. You'll see a change in what's here now. We were mistaken as far as minority representation goes, when Chris DeRosers was, was not moved up to a regular member, although he is the longest-standing alternate right now. He was not moved up because we had him as recorded as a Democrat. And there is no room for a Democrat on the, on the regular member portion of the board.
But he's not a Democrat.
But he's not a Democrat, he is actually registered as a member of the Independent Party. So there, there is in fact room, and Amy has verified all of that. So you'll see that he is back where, where he belongs, as far as the tradition of the Planning and Zoning Commission goes, is the longest-standing alternate is who moves forward into the regular position when there's a.
As well, as, when there is a, the party, the party vacancy allows.
So that's the only change that you'll see here. David Basalon is a regular member, has been for years, and he's still nominated. Chris DeRosers moves up to regular. Kristy Daphne, Daphne moves, continues to serve as an alternate, just as a longer frame. And Kathy Jefferson is, is my recommendation as, as a new member, as an alternate on the, on the commission. I suppose that we will open this up a little bit for the discussion, just because that's why everyone's here, but I want to have the conversation amongst the board before we open it up to the floor. I, I, I understand that there isn't a lot of emotion involved, and first and foremost, I want to apologize to Jane, while I, while I made attempt to speak with Jane, it was not a good, not a good enough attempt, because I was unsuccessful, and I apologize to Jane first and foremost for that, that's bad form, and it should have been, I made sure that that happened before I went away. Jane has served this town for many years.
Absolutely.
And, and deserves accolades, and, and, and respect for the times that she, the time that she has served. And, and I will leave it at that unless, unless other folks want to have more conversations.
No, I, I, the only thing I'd say is that anybody that is on a commission and is, or might get off, or the selectmen, or somebody you might not want, I think it's very important that the communication be done.
Yep.
And, and make it, make it as open and whatnot. And again, I, I apologize, too, as a Board of Selectmen, to Jane, you know, and she needed to be reached out to, and, and we, and she's a, she's a well-known name, her, herself and her family are, are long-term, and I, and I urged her, that last night, when I saw her, I thanked her for everything that she's done, and I, and I wish I had at my age, I wish I had the energy that she has at her age, and I, I hope that.
Excuse me? She's younger than you.
Sometimes I think she is younger than me. But I, I appreciate everything that she's done, and I, I hope that she continues in her public service for the town.
Now, yeah, and that said.
Well, just for now, Jane and I had a conversation on Friday, Jane, and I echoed what Jimmy said, thank you, and I, the way that was handled probably wasn't the proper way, but Jane and I had a good conversation.
Yep, no, that was a mistake, I fully own up to that, and apologize to Jane the other night, and I apologize again today for, for that. That said, we need to move forward with this. There is a position on the, on the board, there's a vacancy. I can think of no one in this town that is more qualified than Kathy Jefferson to fill that seat. There is, there is conversation. There's conversation of personalities, about things, I tried to watch as much of the video last, last meeting as I could, but I don't believe any of that falls into a reason not to, not to appoint someone who is, like, as I said, in my opinion, more qualified than anyone in town to fill that role. And that's where I'm going to stand behind this appointment, and we'll see what the town says at the town meeting. So, you know, this is open for discussion here.
I, I believe that, to a degree, I agree with what Angus said, I mean, she's served the town very well. There's been ups and downs, she was a paid representative of the town for planning and zoning. There were personality conflicts, there was this, there was that, there was, there's a lot of history, and, and go dates back to prior administrations, and then all that kind of stuff. I personally, however, feel that Kathy, as much as she's a nice lady and whatnot, I think, I know she's too much of a hot potato right now to be put on the planning and zoning. I think things need to. I, I ultimately, maybe, she can be on it, I mean, we knew, we have a new planning and zoning enforcement officer that needs to get her feet underneath her and figure out how the town works, and how, how everything works in the town. There's, I just think it's, it's a hot-button topic right now, and there's a lot of people here, but I also look at it in that there are 2,800 registered voters in the, in the town of Deep River, and there's 4,800-ish residents, and there's 25 or 30 people here that are against her. So although I, I, I hear everything that everybody says, I absolutely hear it, it's, it makes it very difficult, I, I find it very difficult to, to recommend her at the present time, I think it should just be, be tabled, or pull her name, and, and let things calm down, and let the Planning and Zoning Commission, which has, has its issues, there's, and that's, again, that's why I brought up that I think the planning and zoning and wetlands meetings and whatnot should be videotaped, so that everybody in town, except for, other than the 20 or 30 people that are here, everybody can see what goes on at all the meetings, not just planning and zoning, but all the meetings. And, and they can have a more informed decision as to what goes on, and when, and when these commission appointments come up, and all, and all that kind of stuff. I know that there was a, there's a, a move to make those commissions not appointed by the selectmen, and make it a, a town vote. I, I think, I'll speak for myself, but probably the other guys, if it was a town vote, it'd be easier than us trying to vet who goes on. However, my concern with that is that there is the possibility of someone that wants to be a commission member, and can afford to put signs all over town, and most people, including myself, I didn't campaign, campaign in the last election, there wasn't one sign in town for me, that's not who I am. If a candidate has a, a following, or a clique, or, or, or whatever that follows them, and they get voted in, and they are, other than being popular, are they qualified to be on the board? That, that's, that's then something that the tax, or the, the voting members, or the voters in Deep River have to, then they have to swallow that responsibility, as to, you know, who, who gets on. I do believe that the three of us were elected to do a job, and, and I would hope that ultimately all of you here, and the other people in town, would trust us to a certain degree to vet a list of candidates. Just because somebody wants to be on a board, in my opinion, doesn't mean they should be on a board. There, there will be people that want to be on the board that are more qualified, and there was the discussion, you know, who, who has, you know, these expertises and whatnot, and if somebody has wanted to be on a board for two years, and keeps getting preempted by somebody that has better qualifications, then that's the way it should be. And that might not happen, in my opinion, with a popular vote. So I'll just leave it at that, and again, I think that, again, going back to Kathy, I think that, my opinion is that she, her name should be withdrawn, and possibly put up at a later date, but until, until some other, some other time.
Well, just a response to that, Jim, is, okay, so you're suggesting that we leave that spot vacant?
I would.
Or that we fill that with someone else, because we've got other people that are interested, we've got other people that we could put.
I think that, yes. I think that spot should be vacant, and then if other people, we go through the process, the people that have expressed interest, and maybe because of all the activity that's here, maybe there's some people that are willing to step up, that haven't expressed an interest before, and then maybe some of those people have qualifications more than, than the people that have asked, or, or, you know, whatever, so. So I, my suggestion would be keep that alternate position open. We've had, not that we want them, but we've had alternate positions open in the past, and I don't think we should be in a rush to fill, fill the position.
I want to start off with Kathy is very qualified, there's no doubt, she's served the town, she's done an excellent job. But with all the turmoil that's going on, started last year, we moved Jonathan on, it just seems we, we haven't put an end to this.
We're not going to. This crowd is not going to allow turmoil to.
Well, hold on, hold on, please. But I'm not in a position tonight to move her forward either, but my concern is, I don't want to move someone forward that's probably not the right candidate either. So, I mean, we ran the planning and zoning for a while with open spots. What, what's the rush? I mean, you have people here tonight that are planning and zoning people, I mean, do we have to fill that spot tonight, or the first of the year, or whatever, or can we wait a little bit longer? And there may be a diamond in the rough out there that we don't know about. I, I don't, I don't know, I don't think I'm ready to, to move forward with it either. Knowledge-wise, hands down, you know, there's some other candidates that probably don't have the knowledge that she has, that could work with everyone, but I, I can't move forward tonight with it, and I would like to table it, or just present the names excluding her. And I think we were asked several times last meeting about advertising. You know, have we advertised, have we publicized that there's openings here? Have we publicized that there's openings here? I think that we should say, okay, we have an opening. We will look at the people, we'll interview the people and then we'll make the best choice from there. But if it's going to go tit for tat and back and forth that, you know, we can't come to resolution as a selectmen's and constituents here that we represent are battling us, nobody wins there. So we have to try to put this behind us, find the best candidate and move forward for the better of the town. And I said that two weeks ago and I'll say it again tonight. We have to get off this because there's some things that have to get done, normal business for the town.
That's fine and I appreciate that and I appreciate what you're saying. I respectfully disagree and that's, I think, what makes a good board and that's one of my points with this Planning and Zoning Commission. Continue, people are saying, what I heard at this meeting, watching the videotape, is we're not going to get along, these people don't get along. Let me tell you what, if everybody on the board is of the same mind all the time, then you've got a bad board. You need to have conversations just like this one where we disagree and I'll tell you, I think that you're making the wrong decision. That's okay. There is no one in town that is more qualified than Kathy. She has got the experience, she knows the law, which I've heard, I've heard people speaking about. Who knows the law better than Kathy? No one. Kathy has kept us out of court and when she hasn't, and I'd like to ask, also ask at some point, that the camera turn around and show that we've got a wonderful sign here to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. I would like to see that, if you wouldn't mind, John. So we can, we'll move forward, but one of the reasons that I'm asking to put this forward and that we fill this role is because one year ago, when we were not in a rush to fill the role, there was a clamor from a number of people in this crowd to get that role filled. We've got people that want to get on there, people that were not qualified, people that were on that for an agenda to try to change the dynamic of the board. And that's now for us to go back and say we're going to have an alternate, what's going to prevent, to your point, what's going to prevent two weeks from now? We've got people in line, we want to have these nominated. What's going to prevent that? I don't think there's anything going to prevent it. I anticipate that that's where we're going to be. So I don't think that leaving this role empty for now is going to satisfy anyone, is going to slow down or any of the clamor that we have right now. Okay? So what I'm going to suggest is that we'll have some, we'll have a conversation with the folks in the crowd. It's going to be a direct conversation, we're not going to go around and around and around and around. But let's have that conversation. Listen to some questions, we'll answer some questions, then we'll make these motions and if the two of you, one of you is going to make the motions, we're going to go. We pretty much know where you're going and we know where I'm going. We'll make the motions to appoint the folks that we have and leave Kathy off there, if that's the road that you want to go at the end of all this conversation. I don't think that it's the right choice and I'm on record for that and I will say that again and again and again.
I do, right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I do have a question because it was presented at the last meeting and now we have Jane here, our attorney, so maybe you can help me, I'll clarify some things. If we go to a town meeting with that spot not filled, can someone make a nomination on the floor, Dwayne Gates, to fill that spot or whatever?
No.
Okay. Because it was presented at the last meeting that you couldn't and I didn't know and that's why I'm asking a question.
No, that's what your board is charged with doing.
Okay.
It's a one-way track. Things have to come through you. It's just like Board of Finance.
Yes.
They don't come through you, they don't go.
I'm not a lawyer, but I wanted to hear, you know, from a lawyer.
You're the appointing authority.
That's important to remember, but it's also important to remember that only a couple of months, a month ago, the town decided that the three of us were put in these positions and kept in these positions to make these kind of decisions. Not, you know, yes, we need to listen to the folks that come out to the meetings, but these folks are not all of the town. We were elected and there are consequences to elections, which means we have to use our best judgment. My best judgment is this, you guys disagree, so we can move forward with this. All right? Anything else from either of you?
No.
Yeah, but anything else?
I'm good right now.
Okay.
Before you get into that Angus, is there economic development?
Economic development was kept off of this for this particular meeting because in the timeframe between a month ago and today, we've got four or five very qualified candidates, people who have made, expressed their interest. I don't want to make a snap decision, I'd like to consider that.
And might get shown interest.
Yeah, I saw that at the meeting. I know that there were a couple of people's names were thrown out, but one of those people wasn't even in the room. That's a good way to get people on commissions.
I just wanted to make one comment too about the transparency of, you know, vacancies and all that. Before I came down, I just went on my phone and I went on Connecticut, Deep River, Connecticut, whatever it is, the website, and under one of the headings, there's vacancies and I hit vacancies and every board that's in the town, there's a list of the vacancies. So it is transparent, it's out there, can we do email blast to everybody that we have emailed? Yes, we can probably do that, but it is available to anybody 24/7/365, the vacancies are there.
Every publication that we put out.
I just wanted to say that. So anyway, open it.
So let's go around the room from left to right, Tom.
A question to put to you gentlemen. What are the personality conflicts with Kathy? I agree with Angus, I think she is qualified, having worked with her professionally and knowing her personally. I think she's made a great addition to the commission. And I hear the issues go down, I mean, take the air, the dirty linen, but what are the issues that you feel she should not be on the commission?
I don't know specifics. All I can go is by what I see here and what I've heard from this and I prefaced, I said before that there's a very small group of people here.
Exactly.
And in just about any situation, the vocal minority is the one that's right here in our face and that's the way that this works.
Which goes to keep her as an appointment and go to the town meeting and let the community decide.
That, to me, is the proper procedure.
Okay.
That's why we took these guys in office.
Hold on.
We'll go right around that few minutes.
I'm sorry.
Gary, we're going to try to keep this in order leave meeting, okay? Thank you.
I actually have a good answer for that. Because I'll let Nick Smith...
Let's go.
Every single thing we do is going to be...
And again, I mean, I hate to put you guys on the spot, but, you know, there's a conflict you're saying and what is it? I mean, if she's so bad, what are the reasons?
It's not so much being bad, Tom. I mean, again, we all know that Kathy's very well qualified and it was brought up at the last meeting by a lady here that sits on the Region Four Board of Education. Now, our superintendent of our school has just retired. How would people feel if she got put onto the, you know what I'm saying? We just want to make sure that the new lady here, we give her her fair trial.
You have professional...
I know, but...
And I... With all due respect, I disagree with you. If you're going to deal with pettiness, that's one thing, but these are, you know, Kathy's professional, I hire a professional zoning enforcement officer. They're going to get through that. Kathy knows the difficulties that the new zoning enforcement officer is going to go through. Knowing Kathy the way I do, she's not going to try to make her life miserable, why would she want to defend her? I hear you.
Kristin, thank you, Tom.
So I think what you were saying is my point. I think you need to let the new person find their own way and a new person, like, I just think having the person that just retired from the job or just isn't in the job is going to make it awkward like altogether and that the new person needs to be able to have that. And I agree with your example and the word, Ed, I just, I think we must have commissions that forbid that from happening for a time period. So I don't think it's a never, I think it's just a not right now. I think you need to go through a time period where you let the new person not have to question...
I will respond to that. To Tom's point, Julie is a professional, she's been in the, she understands the role. The other part of that is the Planning and Zoning Commission, individuals on that commission are not supposed to be coming into the, and making things miserable. Most of the commissioners will see the zoning enforcement officer at the meetings. Other than that, it might be an email correspondence, but it should be the chair who's corresponding with the zoning enforcement officer. So Kathy as an alternate, I don't see how that has any impact on that, but I understand and I appreciate your comment. I'm going to come back to you, I know we said left to right, but Catherine has had her number out for a long time.
My question's quite simple. If she wants to be on the board, why did she resign in the first place?
Because she's not a member of the board as a zoning enforcement officer. She's a citizen in our community, has been for many years. She lived in here, in this town and she worked for this town for many years. She retired. People aren't entitled to retire.
She was a paid...
She wants to continue to participate in the town. Her best place to do that is on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So it's a, I think it's a...
Yeah, she was an employee of the town as a zoning enforcement officer.
I think it's a generous offer.
And the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission are volunteers. They don't get paid. So there's the differentiation there.
So what are the best, what are the qualifications for a person to sit on this board? And are the other people that are on the board, who hadn't been mentioned, are they qualified or not qualified? If Kathy Jefferson is the gold standard here, how does she stack up against the rest of the people who are on the board?
Let's go to qualifications, I think there are no real qualifications. You need to satisfy the people that are appointing or electing you, okay? Kathy's qualifications are, as far as I'm concerned, are very clear and I'll probably forget some. But she has been in that role, she knows the law. She knows the statutes, she knows, she has the ability to find the statutes that she doesn't know them. She understands what is, what is allowed, what is not allowed. She understands how to communicate that. She knows the regulations. Those are qualifications for a Planning and Zoning Commission, that can't be beat.
Do other members know these?
I assume that they do, but the better part, the real answer to that is, they don't really need to know the regulations, they need to know how to read them and find them and interpret them.
She needs to take the orders...
Okay, excuse me. Thank you.
...take the orders from her without knowing anything, just the legend.
So yes, I assume, I would expect that everyone on our commission has the ability to find and learn the regulations. Do they need to learn the regulations? No, they've got the book in front of them. What they need to be able to do is understand the regulations when they're in front of them and they need to be able to interpret them. Now, the wonderful thing that we have in Deep River is a Planning and Zoning Commission. So they're charged with two things that sometimes are actually in conflict. But we have a Planning and Zoning Commission, so they need to work towards planning and then they would need to work with zoning and to make sure that things conform. Kathy would be an asset to this community, has been an asset to this community and I think would be, would be the gold standard. I mean, just for an example, Lime, Connecticut is going through exactly the same situation. Their planning, their zoning enforcement officer just retired, he is now the chairman of their Planning and Zoning Commission. Not saying that we should do whatever the town does, I'm just saying for example, that's what's happening. Let's go across. Jane?
I'm sorry.
Let's go, Jane was up, I didn't see your hand, we'll come back, right back to you, okay?
I respect the Board of Selectmen's right to make appointments, but I have to say that I'm disappointed with the leadership in Deep River and how my removal from Planning and Zoning was conducted. If you had made a call to me Angus, it would have been recorded on my phone. It records everything. It's a smartphone, probably smarter than I. So no, you didn't email me ahead of time, you didn't call me and I find that after almost 20 years of volunteering for this town, following in my mother's footsteps and attending just about every meeting, my attendance as an alternate and as a regular member was excellent. I find that I am dismayed by the disrespect and the discourtesy that was shown me. And I hope that when you have to let somebody else go, that you do not approach it the way you did with me. If you had called me and asked me to come in, I would have done so. And I stand willing to volunteer to help the towns Deep River to the best of my ability in the future. And on entirely different note, when we were talking about, as head of the Regulations Committee, I went to welcome our new CEO and she informed me that there were a lot of regulations that had to be fixed because they did not meet state statutes. So please don't tell me that Kathy Jefferson was on top of everything because we have regulations that do not meet state statutes.
Thank you, Jane.
Jane, I don't think you're correct in that.
Mr. Olson already said it. How many voters are there, Jimmy? 2,800? Are we going to aspire to mediocrity or excellence? It's what we want. Who would you pick to work on your car, Jimmy? Me or a train mechanic? It's the same thing. You're here to make a decision. You're on the bully pulpit, you can't let 20 people that, everybody has a, you know, one, one or single issue down by the dock. A lot of us are getting tired of it. Just because they can't get 4,000 people here, I hate to ask people, I want to know why you can't make a decision. You were elected, if you won by one vote, you would have won. You were elected by a large plurality. I want to know why you can't make a decision right now.
Thank you. Brett?
So I find that offensive because everyone here is taking their own time, so you're calling it a few people? There's a lot of people here. But I'd also like to ask the letter that was submitted, that was also signed by 36 residents, most of them who are not here, who might explain why people are opposing Kathy Jefferson. Could that letter be read, please?
Sure.
I don't know if I can read it or whatever.
Doesn't matter.
I'll read it. Board of Selectmen, to the board, we, the undersigned, write to express our deep concern over the nomination product, process for candidates to the Planning and Zoning Commission as displayed at the November 26 Board of Selectmen meeting. In addition to the unprofessional treatment of Jane Samuels, a veteran of planning and zoning who has served the town with distinction, we object to the nomination Kathy Jefferson, former zoning enforcement officer for the town of Deep River. Her participation in meetings will undermine the work of her successor and perpetuate the old way of doing business. Over her tenure, Ms. Jefferson skirted zoning regulations, ignored procedures and sidelined zoning complaints filed by town residents. She was a proponent of the ill-fated floating zone proposal that was rejected by town residents and was responsible for the troubling state of Deep River's zoning regulations, which the current zoning enforcement officer has stated are urgently in need of an update to comply with state regulations and best practices. Ms. Jefferson's track record is not what we want reflected on this important town commission. We also object to the presentation of Ms. Jefferson as the apparent and chosen nominee without regard to other candidates who have stepped forward in the past. We note that there seems to have been no effort to make vacancies known to town residents, presenting the impression that no one except Ms. Jefferson has stepped forward and there has been no effort on the part of the Board of Selectmen to justify why this candidate above all others was chosen to be put forward. Finally, we object to the manner in which the voting for commission members was conducted at last year's town meeting. There was no official verification of town residencies required by state statute allowing the possibility for attendees who were not town residents to be counted in the vote. The vote should have been conducted by paper ballots so that tallies could be verified and the privacy of voters be maintained. In addition, residents should always have the opportunity to vote for individual candidates rather than a slate in order to elect these individuals, to elect those individuals who believe best represent the interests of the town. Given the objections noted above, we call on you to withdraw the nomination of Kathy Jefferson as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission on the ground that her participation will hinder the work of the current zoning enforcement officer and perpetuate planning and, planning and enforcement practices that are not in the best interest of the town and we call upon you to suspend the current nomination process in order to actively solicit a pool of... to actively solicit a pool of potential candidates and subsequently consider a transparent manner the applicants who step forward, and we call on you to ensure that the town meeting attendees are certified as residents of the town of Deep River, that the vote is conducted by paper ballot, and the candidates are presented individually rather than a slate. And then there's X number of names and addresses.
I will address a couple of issues on that. Third paragraph, skirted zoning regulations, ignored procedures, and sidelined zoning complaints filed by town residents. That's absolutely inaccurate. She responded to complaints she did not absorb...
She didn't respond to mine.
Thank you. She was a proponent of an ill-fated floating zone proposal? The zoning enforcement officer does not have the ability to put proposals in front of the, in front of the town. That comes from the commission. Our friend Ms. Samuels was a proponent of that and worked very hard to get that through. Only in the end, after listening to, listening to the crowd, did Ms. Samuels get up and state her opinion about floating zones, and has worked hard now to try to find whether or not there is, there is room in, in the town for floating zones. Whether there is or not, that will be determined by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it will be put in front of the town again. I don't have any idea if there is room for them or if there is not room for them in our, in our plans. There are positives and negatives to them, and our town needs to look at that seriously, not with a group of people in a, in a Regulations Committee meeting that if you could read the minutes, you would see the unprofessional way that that was handled. We also object to the presentation of Ms. Jefferson as the apparent hand-chosen nominee. That is the job of this commission, is to find appointees and put them on. She became available, she volunteered for this position as soon as she retired. This is the first vacancy that has come up since then, which is why I've been putting her out there. And as far as the manner in which voting for commission members conducted at the last meeting, we will, we did that as, as most town meetings go. If we want, if we're gonna do something different the next time around, we will do so. We will address that as it comes up. This letter is slanderous at best. These are opinions, these are not facts. Our current zoning enforcement officer, I look forward to having a conversation with her and asking her to point out to me what regulations are so far out of whack. I do not believe that to be the case, but if it is, they will be corrected. We will see. I think, Gary, you had something to say?
Yeah, quick things. What party is she affiliated with?
She's Democrat.
She's an Democrat?
Yeah.
All right. And number two, people did vote to put you in. I'm talking to Jim and Dwayne right now, all right? So don't let anybody pressure you into changing your opinions, please.
I don't get pressured here. I think you're saying...
I'm just saying, but you guys, you guys did get voted in by the townspeople, not by the twenty-some people standing in.
Exactly.
You know, so don't let, don't let any...
I think the three of us got voted in.
Yeah, but, but you're not, you're trying to pressure them by driving it into their head. You know, this is who I wanna put forward, this is who I wanna put forward. They already spoke their minds, you shouldn't keep trying to pressure them.
Don't worry.
We'll go around and around. These guys are not gonna be pressured.
I'm listening to everyone that speaks, Gary.
I know you are.
And Mr. Metcalf, I have a clue what to start off with.
Thank you. Ted?
Board of Selectmen in the town formulates the direction the town is going to. Part of the Economic Development Commission or whatever I happen to be on, we go in the direction that's set by the Board of Selectmen. You have to set the direction. If it's Kenny and Kathy, that's fine. I had my issues with Kathy for many years, but I agree with you that you've gotta have someone that knows the right. The planning and zoning is an extremely complicated thing. We have major things coming in the future. We've gotta have exactly the best folks possible to do this in a proper way and not favor one side or the other side, but do what's best for Deep River, all of Deep River. The thing everyone's worried about, Mount St. John could be high-density housing with six hundred cars going up past the train station. Come on, let's think about this. It's not just one side, okay? Let's look at what's the best for the entire town. This is a major time in our history and time, and it, I just remember Dick Smith when he was here. He led the town and had a direction. These folks, I've known them, are trying to do the same thing. We've gotta let them do their job, and my job as far as little things I do is to support of what their direction is, and I hope planning and zoning does the same thing, regardless of who the personalities are. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Maybe you have something.
Yeah, well, a couple...
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Here we are, struggling to find, fill a vacancy. But we wouldn't have a vacancy if you didn't take Jane off.
Yeah.
No, we wouldn't.
And I would like to know why we took Jane off.
Yeah.
And I would like to know why.
Ask Jane if she would like me to repeat what I wrote to her in my letter to her. I gave her the opportunity to keep this between she and I, or the board and her, or if she would like me to explain to you why.
I will leave that under wraps for now, but I would like to make one correction. Floating zones after were started by Nancy Fishback, and when she left Planning and Zoning, it was taken over by Kathy Jefferson. She stepped in and she led the Regulations Committee, and we were happy to let her, but after a while, and she was the one that introduced floating zones. I was not chairman of the Regulations Committee at that point. It was only later that I realized that the Regulations Committee should be headed by one of the members, not the CEO. And so no one else was interested. I stepped forward and led regulations. And I handed over to Tony a packet of floating zone regulations from, I think, ten other towns, and we were also working on bylaws, and I passed on to him the bylaws from numerous towns that we were studying. But when floating zones came up in the Regulations Committee, it was Kathy that was in charge, not I.
Come back. Come back. Let's finish around, going around.
Can I just touch on that?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, answer the question.
No, I find that very interesting, and thank you for that information, Jane, because for the past year plus, it was Angus McDonald that had the floating zone. And now we're hearing that it was presented by Nancy Fishback. How long Nancy...
No, 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 it was not. She started the Regulations Committee.
She started the Regulations before the floating zone. That's what you said, correct?
Way before floating zones. She, when she was on Planning and Zoning, she started the Regulations Committee. When she left, Kathy stepped forward, and we were happy to have her step forward.
Jane was part of an application. Kathy presented it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Regulations Commission moved forward.
And as I recall, when I was on the Regulations Committee, we hit a...
You were never on the Regulations Committee. You participated as a citizen.
Yeah, as a volunteer. We hit a stone wall because we didn't know why anyone wanted them.
I don't know anything about a stone wall. I wasn't participating in the Planning and the Regulations Committee. That was subsequent...
And so we wrote, Jane wrote a memo asking the P&amp;Z, what are they for?
No, I'm...
Jane was on the P&amp;Z at the time, and we don't...
Board of Selectmen, Economic Development, and Wetlands, asking for a particular problem in town that they thought would be answered by floating zone. And I never got an answer from any of those three boards.
Correct. Where...
Do you wanna explain that, Christine?
Oh, the survey that we want to do? Yeah. The economic, I'm Christine Nucci, I sit on the Economic Development Commission, and right now we're looking to create a survey that will go out to all of the residents in this town, because it's really important that everybody has a voice, you know, in regards to the development and the growth.
Yeah.
Yep, so that's what I had to do.
Yep.
And I take offense when you said that it was slanderous.
Thank you.
I'm very offended.
I'm sorry about that.
Dealing with, there's so much radiation with this topic right now?
Jack, go ahead.
We're in the process of developing that.
Dealing with, there's so much radiation with this topic right now, is there some way that you could put this on the table for a couple of months? I mean, why do we have to rush into this today?
That's what Jim said.
Shall I say?
I'm fine with moving, I'm fine with leaving a vacancy for now. It's going to become a hot, no matter what we put forward, as it comes forward, it's going to be a hot-button issue. So I'm fine with tableing it now. I'm also fine with getting it done now and going to town meeting and let the town decide. But we have a Board of Selectmen that will make that decision, not me personally.
But that'll also give you a time to find out what other special talents may be out there that may be looking at this job.
Yep. We have, we have many, many qualified people. We don't have anyone, in my opinion, who is as qualified as Kathy.
Well, there's somebody probably down the street that you don't know. I don't know. Just the same, there's people out there.
Thank you, Jack. Go ahead, Tony.
So I was gonna, a couple of points. First of all, it's not just Kathy, I don't think. I think if the roles were reversed and Kathy was new and Julie was coming on the board, that's just a little awkward. I mean, that's my personal opinion. And to answer your question, it's like Dick Smith. Everybody in town knows Kathy, and he just kept getting elected and elected and elected because he ran on name recognition. So right now, if you go outside, a lot of people who aren't in here having this debate and don't know what's going on, they're just going, oh, it's Kathy. We know her, we'll vote for her. The other thing I was gonna say is, I gotta give Pete Lewis a hard time here. You asked for new blood on the commission at the last Selectmen's meeting. You said you need new people, you need younger people, you need new people. Well, this is the same old person. So I mean, I have to point that out.
She was never on the commission.
No, but it's the same old person.
It's an experience personally.
It is. I'm not gonna disagree with that, but again...
Do you know somebody better, Tony?
Yeah.
The better, the first, like I said...
No, no, let him finish, let him finish.
Can I, can I speak?
I would, I would prefer not to have a back and forth.
No, I'm not gonna go back. I won't let him make his point. I got another point I wanna make, so go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So anyway, the Board of, the Board of Education, if you are, I believe somebody stated this the last time, if you are the superintendent of schools, you can't get on the Board of Education afterwards. You have to wait three years to give the new person some leeway in doing things their way. And I think that's something that we might wanna look in for planning zone. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Jonathan? Oh, actually, hang on one second. Stacy had her hand up.
I don't have anything very coherent to say. I just wanna say that we are all here because we care about the town. There have been a lot of hot feelings for the last year, and I think for some good reasons, I think people have gotten, a lot of people who are here have gotten agitated by certain issues or certain events, which is what makes people get involved. And I don't think it necessarily means you're like a mob or, or you're crazed or something. I mean, I think people need to be polite on every side, I really do, and listen, let people talk. But I, I'm here not because I'm part of a mob, but because I'm getting educated. I, there were, there were things that happened last year with the railroad, there were things that happened with floating zones, and it made me feel that I needed to get more involved in my town. And I should have done it earlier, absolutely, maybe when things were boring, but I, who comes by for? So I'm just saying that we do need to, there's that tension between fighting for what you believe, which is very important, and we're gonna disagree, being polite, but not accusing those who disagree with you, whether they're in charge or whether they're in the group of being evil or your enemy. You know, we have to find a, a way to respect each other, and, and I hope that I have respect as a town member. Who cares? I may be only one of twenty-eight, but I did, you know, gobble down my pizza, stand, choke it down, and run here, wait, because I care about my town, so.
Thank you. Sarah?
So to the point of respect, that's a really good point. This is a small town, we all live here together, everybody should be respectful. And to that point, there were a lot of accusations last time that there was something nefarious going on because the Board of Selectmen are appointing people, but that's in our town's laws. So if people wanna offer critique, even if I don't agree with you, please do so, not saying that there's corruption going on, because the town Selectmen are doing their job. Their job, according to the charter and our lawyers here, is they appoint. So I agree that we should elect people to appoint. I think that's the safer bet. If people wanna change it, then we're gonna change it, but don't go telling people that there's corruption going on because they're doing their job. Let's be respectful about how we discuss this, so. Thank you.
Gus will come back, too.
Yeah. I feel like Jonathan Kavanagh.
I thought you called him.
No, I said Gus will come back.
Certainly. Excuse me.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
I've had the pleasure of being beat up in meetings like this for thirty-some years, and I just can't get enough of it. Let me, the floating zone was not understood by the members, and that became quite clear at the hearing upstairs. And when I say the members, I'm including myself. We just didn't understand it. When people asked for explanations, Kathy understood it, but the rest of us really didn't, and so it was absolutely right that we withdrew that. One of the offshoots of that, and I don't know how this started, was that word got around that this was gonna apply to down by the river. Never was. It was for large pieces of land, I think, and don't ask me to explain what it was for at all, but I believe that the smallest piece of property that would fit into the regulations was twenty-five acres, so there was a lot of misinformation there. But everybody needs to understand about planning and zoning is, our regulations have to adhere to state statute. Our regulations are our regulations. There are almost no instances when we can waive. There are a few, just because it's in this place instead of this place, or that person instead of this person. Our job is to understand the regulations. It's very helpful to have a person, it has been Kathy, now it's Julie, who is well-versed and who can guide the commission in its deliberations and say, no, you can't do that. Or if you're gonna do this, you better explain why, or somebody's gonna come back and sue you. So if you think you wanna be on Planning and Zoning, be aware that it's not something you can come to and suddenly make a big change. You can lobby for changing regulations within the statutory limits, but there is very little that the commission or its zoning enforcement officer can do that is not already in black and white. So I guess that's that.
Thanks. Gus?
Yeah, so my sign, since it became part of the discussion, it wouldn't have worked being, like, it works as caution, construction ahead, and I chose to put corruption, but I couldn't put caution highly questionable ahead, because that just didn't work. So that's my, my right, freedom of speech, so that's what I did. So that explains that, because that wouldn't have worked the other way.
Anybody else? Let's go back right here.
I'm here because I read the newspaper article and...
Which one?
The most recent one. The local paymaster's paper posted on the... The, it was stated by Wayne, I think, that the zoning board, you wanna go in a different direction. So that's my question.
Yeah, I can't speak to that.
What's a different direction? And maybe, I read that and I'm thinking, hmm, that's interesting.
And it's no due disrespect to Jane, as she's sitting here, but we've heard from everyone in the room, pro or con, Kathy is very qualified. Very, and I'm not saying Jane's not qualified. And that's my, that's my wording on a different...
So that, that was a personality thing, not a semantics.
I think, my guess is that what that meant is we're making a change. I don't know if that's correct.
A personal change, not a shift in the zoning boards.
Correct. I don't, actually don't think we need to make a shift.
And if we wanted to get into it, I think Susan asked Jane, or Angus asked Jane, about a letter that was presented, we don't wanna get into that at this present time, Jane said. So we'll just leave it like that. That's a different direction. The information that was provided to myself and Jim, we read through it, we looked at it, and we have to make our decision. As Gary says over there, Angus is, you know, trying to beat us down, no. We can get provided the information and we have to get the best judgment call that we feels right. Sometimes you're gonna make someone happy, other times you're gonna make a lot of people upset with you. That, I guess that's why we got elected. So we have to make these tough decisions.
Pete?
Aside from knowledge, what makes a good P and Z member? Would it be character and integrity?
I think that's part of it. Patience.
And an understanding of the law.
Respect.
Or to ask, Julie's the new woman.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think that all the members of the P and Z board have good character, integrity, excuse me, and integrity? You know where this is gonna go?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna get into that, Pete. That's, that's a personal thing, that's, I know that...
It's not personal to me.
No, because you know what?
It is to me.
I'm gonna interrupt here, that's a, that's a loaded question, because I could get along with a certain individual that's on the P and Z, and Jimmy may not, or vice versa. So that's a loaded question, that personalities, that's a tough question. I mean, right? I mean, that's how I, again.
And I'll, yeah.
There's, there's people that, my father get along with that I don't get along with, and vice versa. So that, that's a tough question, Pete, for us to answer, and...
Yeah, most, most of these, most of these positions are volunteer positions. You know, we're not putting, they're not paid positions, we're not putting out an ad in Indeed.com or whoever these job places are, we're not going through, there is an interview process, but there, it's not a qualifications and all that. When it's a volunteer thing, we have to go from the pool that we're, we're provided with. And, you know, it's been brought up, you know, who, who has what experience on what commission. There is no requirement, you have to, you have to get the best candidates that present themselves for these boards. You know, they are volunteers. You know, every one of them, with the exception of the three here, they're all, they're all volunteers. And if people don't volunteer, the people that do volunteer, you try to figure out if somebody's got, is an architect, or, or has a planning, a zoning experience, or this, and then are they, you know, are they a good person, have been in town for a long time, whatever, you know, there's, there's some, there's numerous things. But it's not like a paid position where you're out and you have a resume and submit a resume and all that kinda stuff, so.
Well, what I'm saying, Jimmy, is everybody, I think, is in agreement that Kathy's an excellent candidate. And no one...
No, we're not.
No, of you three, excuse me, of you three, do you know of a better candidate?
Is there some business that has to be done right away for this P and Z person to be on the board today?
No.
I'm not asking you, I'm asking them.
I'm asking all of you. Is there something on the books right now?
Yes, we've already...
So, there is nothing on the table?
We've already, we've spoken to that.
I just wanna give you...
Pardon?
Can I say something?
Please.
Sure.
Luckily, I'm not from the... That's the best part. No, um...
Why is that the best part?
Because I can be objective. Um, I've been on the zoning commission and all line for forty years. And I'll tell you that at least for the first two or three, even though I'd just gotten out of law school and I started, I hadn't got a clue as to what was going on. It takes a very long time to become a decent member of a regulations committee, because you, you're learning so many things. You have to learn about the community and what it wants, and nobody tells you what it wants. You have to figure this out. Um, you're, you're, you learn when you take an application in, because you see how the maps and the other things interact with your regulations. It just takes a tremendous amount of time. So anybody that's gonna sit on the commission, you want them there to start sitting, and I'm not saying anything about this particular incident, but it's gonna take them, it's gonna take them a long time to get the kind of experience and familiarity so that they can make good decisions. And those decisions that are made by planning and zoning have a lot of impact for a long time on a town. So, you know, having people in the alternate positions so they can sit and watch and start soaking it up is a good idea, but it just takes, takes a long time, doesn't matter what your background is.
Tony, you had something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say one last thing. I, I, Pete was saying that, you know, the integrity and all that thing. I, I think you made a very good point that when you said that, you know, you don't want everybody to have the same opinion. You, you do want people to have different opinions, and not everybody's gonna get along all the time. Um, I think that came up quite a bit when we were doing the, the gas station across the street and maybe adding on to the town hall. Not everybody agreed those things were the right thing to do and it made for a better decision. Um, you know, so I, I think you nailed it with that.
But as, as this lady said here, we have to be respectful for each other.
Absolutely.
We can all agree to disagree.
Right.
But let's respect each other's comments, concerns, and hash them out like we're human beings.
Right.
Versus throwing negative stuff around, because that, that's doing nothing for our town. And I'm a firm believer of trying to work together to find a happy medium, but it starts with respect.
All right.
Just to go full circle, I would go back to what I said initially, is I would hope that you would see fit to keep Kathy's name and vote in favor of her, and let it go to the town for the community to vote on it. Because, again, I'm just, I'm reading body language in what you folks have said, I think you all agree that Kathy is a qualified person. Let, you know, the townspeople go from there.
That's what I would do.
That is my, that's my suggestion, but I'd like to move on. I think we've had, everyone's had, I think everyone's had an opportunity to speak, so if one of you would make a motion. What do you got, Sue?
Um, the minutes from last time?
We'll talk about that at the, at the audience of citizens, thank you.
Okay.
No, not yet.
So if we can get a motion from one of you guys, we can move this forward.
I wanna make another statement.
Okay.
And I want it to be loud and clear. I'm not bullied, I'm not persuaded, I'm not pressured. I make the right decision. I got elected to make the decisions. As Gary Clark said, the resident Deep River elected me to make this decision. As Mr. Metcalf said over here, there's thirty-five, forty people here that are, we've listened to them, and I appreciate their comments and concerns. So let's let the other twenty-eight hundred people, twenty-five hundred, whatever we have, make the decision. So I would, I will change my initial and put it to the town vote, just like the people that voted me in, they can vote Kathy in, we can vote Kathy out.
Yep.
In two years from now, they can vote me in, or they can vote me out. But I got elected to make these tough decisions. It's a very tough decision, as I'm, but let's let the townspeople make the call.
Okay. I, I, I agree.
Is there any legal opinion as to how, is that, is that the way it can and should be handled?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, you send her up, then it's, then it's up to the...
So if you have to go further, there're gonna be other applicants that'll be on that same ballot?
No.
So there's only gonna be the one person, huh?
The way the ordinance is written is that we, the Board of Selectmen make the appointments. Those appointments go to town meeting. If, if there is no success at that town meeting, then it comes back to the Board of Selectmen to make another appointment and bring that to town meeting. That's, that's, that's the process.
So how many votes does she need to get?
One more, four then again.
Majority, I guess, simple majority, I don't know what it is. Simple majority?
At the town meeting then, would these be voted on individually, or as...
Yes, yep.
Okay.
That's what we did, that's what we did the last one.
And it'll be a paper ballot vote?
If that's, if that's what we need to do.
I think the residents asked for that, so I, I think...
That's fine.
Don't forget, make your motion for that vote.
Yep.
Yeah, so we, we do need a motion.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to move forward the four names that were provided. David Basileon, regular, Christopher DeRosa, regular, Daphne M. Stroud, alternate, and Kathy Jefferson, alternate. I should've read the terms expire.
That's okay, all twelve, one, twenty, twenty-two. Except for Kathy, it'll be twelve, twenty-one.
I made a motion.
So second? I'll second that. Any conversation, any more conversation amongst the board? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we will schedule a town meeting. I will ask for some conversation regarding whether or not we wanna do this as quickly as we can, or whether we wanna wait until after the holidays.
The legality of notification is...
It's, it's five, seven days, I'm not sure, but that's, we can get, we can get this done in a week, or we can get this done at the beginning of January. Uh, we can schedule the meeting. I would like to schedule the meeting. I think that the citizens will be better served if we wait until the beginning of January, when no one's got the holidays to worry about and that kinda thing. So that's what I would like to do, unless we hear some massive objection to doing that. Thank you, that's, that's what we'll do for the first week, and we'll try it for the first week in January. That said, there's no other business in front of the town. I'd like to go to audience of citizens, and I think Dwayne has requested that he can answer all of the questions that were asked two weeks ago, that he can answer.
No, it's just that, you know, the questions were asked and I...
No, I think it's good.
I made my mid-point that I said...
You promised him that you would answer.
Promised him. So if you're gonna do audience citizens first?
No, why don't you go ahead? That might, that might take care of some of the questions.
Okay. First question I was asked, do any of the members that serve on the inland wetland have a background in science? And for the information that we gathered, we don't have a full list on that, so I can't give you a one-hundred percent. These answers came from the people that work in the office here.
So are there any?
We don't know.
We don't know as of right now. So again, I, I'm just reading off the questions that were asked and the answers that I filled.
Can you find out for next time? And the question is, so...
Yep. When's the next inland wetlands meeting?
Thursday.
I think it's Thursday.
This Thursday?
Yeah.
So for the next Board of Selectmen meeting?
I know, but I'll, myself, if I'm available, I'll come to the inland wetlands and ask people personally.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's, that'd be the easiest way to, to get the answer for you, right?
That's here?
That's here.
Do any members that serve on the Community Health Committee have a background in health? Same thing.
Science, just science.
But another lady had asked about the health.
She asked about, I think she has science and he listened to it.
No, she, but it's health, because she's on the health committee. And that was the same answer. And if I have to go to that meeting, I will go to that meeting. How many boards or commissions can someone serve on? There's no limit of the number of boards or commissions, only in certain circumstances an individual can't serve on specific boards or commissions simultaneously. For example, one can't serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. How many hours a week do our police officers work? Dawn is regularly scheduled for forty hours, as is Ray. Pete is part-time, so he's scheduled for twenty-four hours. How much do digital speed readers cost? I think this lady over here asked that. Anywhere between three thousand and five thousand for the type that we're currently using and that we currently own.
Thank you.
What is and what do, what is and what do they do on the Design Advisory Board? The Deep River Design Advisory Board, DAB, is available to provide guidance to developers and property owners on the exterior design characteristics of development and redevelopment, including the existing properties within the commercial and industrial districts, within the gateway conservation zone, and the residence districts for work requiring special permits and site plan approvals, or as many otherwise be requested by Deep Rivers Planning and Zoning Commission. The DAB will be available, if requested, of selectmen for review of town or public projects. How many tickets are handed out by our police officers? We have requested that and we're waiting for that information. Can the current P and Z members interview new candidates? I don't know, but probably. The Board of Selectmen make the appointment, which is ratified or overturned at subsequent town meetings. What is the current salary of our residential trooper? I know this is a public, I know this is public information, but I do not feel comfortable discussing that publicly. That said, for your knowledge, she makes a base salary of approximately ninety-seven. Tony asked, why can't we get, why can't we get a grant for Main Street? Right? We can and have. All the sidewalks and lights were funded through the STEEP grant, which have ended. Can we change the size of the P and Z? Yes, but we determined last year that there is no need for a reason for a town to do so. We talked about what has to be done to make the boards or commissions to have to be elected. We have information that was provided to us by our attorney, and we can talk about that tonight, or we can...
Where we want to, there's a process.
It was brought up to nominate Jill Larson and Mike Donella to the Economic Development Commission. Appointments to the commissions are made by the Board of Selectmen after interest expressed by the appointees not based on unconfirmed interest, based on nominations from the floor. Jill has subsequently expressed interest and is being considered. I have not heard from Mr. Donella Regarden, EDC.
That was, that was written prior to watching the movie. I didn't see the video when I answered that question, so.
Ben Whelan asked about the state statute that says to make up the P and Z should be the whole commission, including alternates, not just sitting members. Jane Cavanaugh wants to go to the town meeting for nominations for the boarding commissions. Town meetings is a part of a process now. The town elects the Board of Selectmen, and in doing so expects that the Board of Selectmen will do its job by making the necessary appointments, some of which are confirmed at the town meetings. P and Z, ZBA, CAC, some of which are not. Those are some of the questions that were asked two weeks ago. I did my best, as I said, I would try to. Some I still haven't got the answers, but I just wanted to go on record of answering the questions that were provided to me that, that evening, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the audience of citizens?
Just a quick question.
Mike.
Angus, we got back eighty-five, we got back fifty percent of our residential trooper.
A little bit more than that, I think.
The program.
The program.
Not the salary, the program. Is that a one-time, every year?
Every year, the state budget's, it seems as if it fluctuates. It went from fifty to eighty-five to one-hundred and thirteen, or whatever it is.
Last year it was one-hundred and seventeen percent.
So...
That is set by OPM as nothing to do with us or our decision-making.
Or us, yeah.
Each year, we, or the town, what we typically do come March is we try to estimate where we think OPM is gonna set that rate, which is the fringe rate, includes a lot of different things. We typically don't get that rate until June, so we try to set a rate that we think is an appropriate rate that's gonna be close to what we think OPM is gonna set. At the time, we have to do it because the budget is due in March. So we set that number, and then come June, we always set it higher. Last year, we were able to buy speed signs, we were able to do a lot of different things with that extra money that was left over. So no, that money does not come to me.
I'm just thinking ahead, we have that bucket of money, right now, we have a small...
We have a small portion of money, yeah.
Which you're...
That's what I'm hoping to utilize to bring in a part-timer earlier than waiting until next June.
Okay, so, well, I guess two questions. I guess Dawn and you guys are, do the interview process? And those are candidates that come out of...
We average, we've advertised, and anticipating that we're gonna get some, we've already gotten one application.
So could they be retired police officers?
Yeah, absolutely.
So what happens moving ahead? We've got that little bucket of money that we know we have.
We will budget, you know, next year's, and that's why we're bringing it to the Board of Finance right now, instead of just doing it, because we've gotta go to the town with our budget every, like we do every year. So we will, I'm trying to get ahead of it and get confirmation from the Board of Finance that they have the confidence and that they have the same feeling that I do, that we that we need to have this constable on duty. We should have that constable, and it should be a part of our budget moving forward, not year to year, but moving forward.
So we could potentially have that bucket of money?
That bucket of money, no, that bucket of money changes every year, Mike. We, we budget for what the, what OPM, what the governor's budget projects is what it's going to be. So we budget for that. Um, this year, for some unknown reason, they cut that from one-hundred and seven to one-hundred to eighty-five.
One-hundred and seventeen to eighty-five.
That was not projected at all, it just, it just happened. It was a surprise. So to say we can count on that money year to year, no, we can't. As much as I would like to say we can, we can't.
I'm just more disappointed than you are.
No, no.
I, I have very little confidence in our state budget. We've already, OPM is already screwing us on town, I'm sorry. It's already pulling up our town aid bill.
Right.
So, um, you know, just because the governor's duking it out with the legislature right now on the highways, so. You know, this is a, this is a, this is a, I think we're fortunate that we have this. I think we should take advantage of it and get a few extra months with an extra officer. Um, and that's what we've projected to the town, to the
So we get this candidate after this interview process, and when does that bucket run out? That money?
That money runs out in, at June thirtieth.
The end of fiscal year.
Yeah, the end of the fiscal year.
New budget starts in July.
Yeah.
So moving ahead, if the town votes down?
Town, if the town votes down the budget, the town won't vote on this particular thing. This is the decision made by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. We need to be confident that we're going to go to the next year's budget with this position in place. And I'm confident that we're going to. Whether the town decides to vote for it or not, who knows? You know, this is, next year's gonna be a difficult budget, just like this year's wasn't the one before this was.
Has an increase in the
But there will be a forty thousand dollar increase in the budget to accommodate this part-time.
I just wanna touch on, Sue, one second, Sue, I just wanna touch on one thing. Last week, we had the lieutenant governor here for presentation upstairs for our Vietnam vets. Angus and I grabbed Susan and talked about the speed problem. And she's gonna have Commissioner Jolletti get ahold of us and come down.
She has, and we're arranging for it.
Okay, but I just wanted to
We already spoke about it.
Okay, I just, I just, I just wanted to
Everybody knows it, it's great.
Something else, are you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you, yep.
But I just wanted to let you know that, Mike, because
Let's get our corrections with the minutes from Susan, yeah?
Yes, um, the minutes failed to mention a couple of things. There was great discussion by the public about why Jane was not nominated. And also, there was great amount of public comments on that. And also, there was a great amount of valid public comments against Kathy Jefferson. And none of those points was mentioned in the minutes. And they were even mentioned in the newspaper. And I just think you should add them, because otherwise, you could be accused of covering up something.
Okay, I think, I think the minutes, I, I wasn't at the minute, I did not write the minutes.
I will take some of the responsibility, Sue.
But you should add them, because otherwise, you could be accused of covering something up.
But, but for, for myself, that evening, I was trying to run a meeting.
Yep.
If I tried to write down every single word that
Yes, we, we agree, we agree.
Like included, I mean, otherwise, I don't know.
Those are fine. I think, I think that oftentimes, minutes will reflect that there was a lengthy discussion.
Yeah.
Pro and con. And I think that's what these minutes say.
You're right, you're right.
Can I say that I had an over-two-hour ride on my horse today? And we managed to get back to the bar together, which is always good. I am enjoying my situation now. So I think that I, I thank you all for your support. But it is, as I said before, this is a responsibility of, of the Board of Selectmen. They have this right. They do not, they are not obliged to take nominations from the floor. They make the appointment, and then the town decides. They're not gonna reappoint me, fine. I'll have more time to ride my horse, swim my laps. I spent a lot of time here in Deep River, serving to the best of my ability, and I'm, I'm glad to do it. Now I'm gonna move on to something else. Not just sports.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, is there anything else from the audience of citizens?
Yeah, I just wanna make, just a Dawn can speak to this much better than I can, but just so everybody understands, even a big town like Old Saper, I don't know, do they, do they hire people and then train them? Or do they try to? Forget that. We can't afford to hire somebody and then pay for their training. And if that happens, what they're gonna do as soon as they're trained is go and work for somebody who pays them more anyway.
Right.
So, we're pretty much obliged to hire either a retired municipal or state trooper. That's probably our only options, right? We have to hire somebody who's maybe the training has to be brought up to date, but who has the basic training that's required for the job.
Yeah, we are looking for certified officers so as to reduce the cost of not having the training.
Yeah.
It would be a very easy transition to bring someone in here who's either retired or a current certified police officer, and it would be a less costly thing.
Thank you. And I, I need to make an announcement that we've had, um, our, both of our town committees were, uh, less than vigilant in filling all of the elected positions in town this year for this election. So we have a vacancy on our Board of Assessment Appeals. We have two vacancies on the Deep River Elementary School Board of Education, although I have one person who has already contacted me about that. And we have a vacancy on the Library Trustees. So if you're interested, or if you know someone who might be interested, please have them contact the office.
You said there was a whole bunch reported, Ted.
There are two.
Two, oh, sorry.
And we have already one person who has expressed interest, um, so, so that's good. Um, so we're, those are also going to be appointments. So, uh, keep your eyes peeled, and if you know anyone. The Library Trustees needs to be a Republican. So Ted, if you wanna come out, then you're, you're on board. Uh, that said, I think we are done. Oh. Our annual Festival of Trees, please go to the Deep River Historical Society and vote, and enjoy Christmas time in Deep River. And next Saturday, December fourteenth. Uh, that's coming up.
This Saturday.
It's coming up Saturday, the fourteenth. We have our annual light parade, our second annual light parade. It was really fun last year. And I would suggest you come out. The holiday stroll, the stores are open late, uh, the restaurants are open. And, uh, it's, it's really fun. So come on out and have some fun with your neighbors.
New barber?
We have a new barber. Who cares?
I haven't visited yet. The brewery at the north end, which so far just has, I think the beer is no food, and the, uh
Tailgaters.
Yeah, which has food and beer.
Tailgaters is down by where Sue's Kitchen, I think, Susan's Kitchen used to be.
And that pit, yeah.
And in the, uh, the little industrial park on Winter Avenue is where the brewery is.
Where Whelan used to be for asshole divers.
That's right.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion too?
Some, Angus?
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
What's the next meeting?
Our next scheduled meeting, I believe, is January, um
It was on this list.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
January fourteenth.
January fourteenth.
We want to meet on Christmas Eve.
That'll be it.